We are going to start right off with our guest, Dr. Putnam and Mr. Abbott are here from Bosse's Two for tonight's presentation.
Hello? It's, every year when Joanne attends a public board meeting, I go over publicly ahead of time to see who's going to do what. She'd say, "You invited the annual meeting and thank you for your support and what we're doing for that." So I think this is a great opportunity, at least I can tell you a little bit about Tom, but I will invite you to the annual meeting Wednesday, April 9. As I recall, last year, the winner for attendance to the annual meeting was Wiegand Chi-Lai. So, and they had everybody attend, so there's something to shoot for. Yeah, we have, you know, all kidding aside, Hilton is always well represented there. We appreciate that and do appreciate your support. A while back when Joanne came to our board and told us that she intended to announce her retirement, it was a moment we all dreaded and we, I mean, Joanne was such a fixture in Bosse's, not just as BS, but she'd been there 47 years and I know all of us were sort of dreading the times that would come and wondering where we'd go next. That it's, district superintendents are very important positions, but it's not easy to find good candidates. So when we got the list of potential candidates from the third consult and saw Tom Putnam's name on the list, I and I think others that knew Tom were relieved. We were pleased because we knew that he was a man that had a lot of substance, was well regarded on the east side of town, and somebody that we knew could collaborate and could carry on the good work that we've been doing, not just under Joanne, but under previous district superintendents. Now, I did think tonight I could carry more of the load because Tom's been on the job for exactly a month, but he's got it under control, he's even got a powerpoint and...
We heard it's long.
I told him in exact, it's 48 slides.
Yeah, well, Tom told me it was limited, so. So, anyway, I'm happy to introduce Tom Putnam. I'm hopeful that you'll be seeing him again year after year after year as he establishes himself. He'll just spend some time here talking a little bit about what we're doing in particular or what we want to do for help.
So I have just a, yeah, 48 slides. It's 12, but I was told that my thank you slide and my intro slide don't count, so I got to tag Casey totally. Let's go through these, I'm really just looking at our instructional programs, our Department of Exceptional Children, Career and Technical Education, and Center for Workforce Development. Some really exciting things there that don't necessarily impact our students, but it does for our greater community. And then Bosse's for Science, something that I find very exciting. Our summer school program, I'm not going to read these slides here, but this is just an overview of that regional summer school offerings that are, this is Bosse's Two offers. But more specifically, when we look at our students who attend these courses, it really does, a total of this past summer, a total of 317 students across our components attended our summer school program. I have another slide that's a graph with color, in case you turn, I can only use one slide, so this is this slide. But again, it's those pieces, when I look at regional summer school, the cost of every school trying to run a summer school program for their own students and staffing is very difficult, so the fact that we're able to support all of our component districts, we're talking about 317 classes that students would have had no opportunity to pass before they start another school year. So trying to keep students on track to their graduation goals is really critical for our summer school program. Our Department of Exceptional Children, right now, as you're aware, Hilton Village has an integrated preschool with 12 students with disabilities and 12 students without disabilities. All of the students with disabilities are Hilton students and the majority of our students without disabilities in that program are Hilton students. And so, close to home, which is great. In addition to that, we had, in addition to those numbers, we have 18 Hilton students in our school age program as well as 18 students in our preschool programs. Thank you for sending students to the preschool program. Some of them are attending over at Bosse's Two and I get to see them every day because that is connected to the district office. Career and Technical Education, what I think we're really known for with Womoko, especially for our older students. Again, juniors and seniors exploring career fields. This is an area that I just, we're amazed in New York State because we do have a Bosse's. There's 37 Bosse's across the state, every school's connected to one. But being able to offer these programs, many districts, I think, over the years sort of pulled away from offering their own auto tech program. I'll use that as an example, my former life in a different district that we won't name because it's on the east side and on the west side is the best side now. So, we had, they had one and the cost of trying to run those programs and keep them up. And so, when Bosse's can step in and support that, it's pretty amazing, that partnership. And so, with CTE students, we have 151 Hilton CTE students, both AM and PM. I'll make that up as of October 1st. The most popular programs for our Hilton students by the numbers are cosmetology, heavy equipment, HVAC and plumbing, and then auto technology. And we have done some work over there in the Womoko building. You are all welcome at any point to come over and have a tour of all that we offer our students. And I just like to point out that our CTE Expo is Wednesday, November 6th. For a couple hours, great opportunity to get families of eighth, ninth, and 10th graders over to take a look. John, if you don't know that there's a spelling error in there with Bosse's and don't bring that back to my evaluation. Center for Workforce Development, I still want to touch upon, really incredible in terms of adult education. We really utilize the term Center for Workforce Development now. So many partnerships here, and I just want to share a couple. We're really doing a lot of work through grants to, in order to provide programming for everybody, but especially in the area we're focusing on is English for speakers of other languages. Really programming for the parents of our ELL students that are amongst all of our school populations. So we offer through there free adult English classes and also what I'm excited about is the paraprofessional certification course. I'm going to imagine that in all districts, trying to find those incredible paraprofessionals is getting harder and harder. It's an area that's tough to find, and so an opportunity for free training and certification here. This year is new, we're integrating English-speaking parents, three members along with our non-English speakers, which I think does help the integration model, there's lots of evidence behind it. So this is one I'm really excited about, when I learned this my second week on the job. We're doing the same thing, we are offering a CDL permit preparation course. We offer it for anybody interested, but it is free because of grants for English language learners. And so, one of the perks of going from a school superintendent for 10 years to the district superintendent of Bosse's is we don't have buses. And I'm sure Casey can tell you the fun of making sure that you got enough drivers on the road. We typically always have enough buses, but it's the drivers. And so, really looking at everything we can do and Bosse's can do to support all of our communities to make sure that we're training people that may not have ever thought about being a bus driver before. And that CDL permit test is great. We actually are, this week are painting our back parking lot, so we'll have the bus training set up all in the back. We'll do it right on our campus. Again, with adult career training, over 120 students enrolled in evening fall classes. And I just want to point out that next week, we've got an open house for anybody interested in coming over to take a look. If you happen to know an electrician who is maybe looking for a new career or want to do something, Womoko needs a new electrician teacher. One of the areas of why we have wait lists for our programs is we don't have the staff to run the classes. It is pretty difficult in this economy for folks to think about leaving maybe private sector to come into the public sector and teach, but there's incredible marketing that we're going to start working on to hopefully help educate private sector folk, electricians, HVAC, plumbing, all of it, to really come in and work with our students. Bosse's for Science, another one, this is really a collaboration of New York State Bosse's and this service provides science kits for teachers to use at the elementary classrooms. Hilton for this year requested 203 science kits. I just have to point out, this is an area where many times we look at vendors and we may buy a product from a vendor. Bosse's isn't a vendor, so these kits were really built over three years from teachers from all of our component districts as well as other teachers across the state. They are curriculum-based, they are rigorous, and it really helps teachers bring science to life in the elementary school. Not just through sort of the low-level things, but really inquiry and experiments and hands-on. And so, we're just really excited for this program as it continues to build. And I promised Casey I would be short, so that wraps up unless there's any questions or comments from the board.
I do have one comment. I think it was known, John, that Joanne loved Hilton the most of all her components.
She's always sold me.
So, we're, you know.
Absolutely.
We have her expectations.
I have expectations and as I shared with the couple, they have pizza and ice cream, so I ate at a Hilton pizza place, I won't say the name, but if all the Hilton ice cream shops would stay open through the winter, I would be very humbled. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome to my side.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to comment, thank you for the specifics that you put in there about what we receive and what we get. That's helpful.
And I just want to point out, actually, it's kudos to your superintendent and Casey have reached out. You know, we do have issues when we look at our programming and trying to get students in the right spot. So, thank you, reached out, just had a conversation and was able to look back and hopefully we'll get to a better spot. But that communication goes with the board as well, so anything comes up Bosse's-wise, Casey has my cell phone number and probably knows where I live, so any questions, I'm happy to work through and try to make sure. My goal obviously is really around customer service. Bosse's offers incredible things, so we can only do it with the partnerships of our component districts and some of the non-component who utilize our services. So, we're here to try to do the best we can. Thank you, I've actually been here five weeks and I think I know 2% of what I'm doing. So, I'm really hopeful in next presentation...
Is the easel still up in your office, the photo of Joanne?
The easel is not up in your office anymore. We're trying to, I'm thinking like a big backdrop somewhere, so.
Well, we will try to get as many of our people there as possible in April. I think all of us have done it at least once, maybe we can get all seven of us there. It's always a good night.
It is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And obviously, with the board clerk, it is just some more information on workforce center development, the Center for Workforce Development, and so I'll share that with you, you can look at it at any leisure. And again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, next up, we have administrative reports, Dr. Kassar.
So I do want to comment on Dr. Putnam and just how thrilled we are to welcome him as a new district superintendent of Monroe, Switzerland, Bosse's. As he mentioned, 10 years at the Penfield Central School District. So with his proven leadership and deep commitment to education, excellence, we look forward to the positive impact he will have on the student, staff, and community of the region. We also want to thank Mr. Abbott because he's been a longtime serving member of the Bosse's Board and he is the Hilton representative. His career is in education, he's been a past Board of Education member. So we always know that the best interests of the Hilton Central School District are at the Bosse's table. So, just want to thank both of you gentlemen and welcome you here this evening and a small welcome gift on behalf of the Board of Education. So, welcome and we look forward to a long, healthy relationship of working together, so greatly appreciated. Also, this month is School Board Appreciation Month. Because we have many of our board members that will be in New York City for NISBA, we are going to recognize our Board of Education this evening. So, the package in front of you is a part of our appreciation from the district for all the work that you do. So, on behalf of our entire district, I want to express our deepest gratitude for your unwavering dedication and service. Your commitment to our students, staff, and community makes a profound difference in shaping the future of the Hilton Central School District. As you lead with integrity, you model the values we hold dear, inspiring our students to be honest and responsible leaders of tomorrow. Your efforts in creating a welcoming and affirming environment ensure that every student feels valued, seen, and supported. You continuously put people first, building a community where relationships thrive, and you foster a culture of lifelong learning that empowers both students and staff to grow and succeed. Your hard work behind the scenes is in the front of the community, reflects the best of what it means to be a part of the cadet family. We are truly fortunate to have such passionate and dedicated individuals guiding us towards a brighter future. So on behalf of the entire Hilton community and the students and staff that work here in the district and attend the district, thank you very much, you are appreciated and you probably don't get thanks enough, so thank you. Last, in my comments today, just wanted to share with you some updates around the Student Board of Education representative. So, have had some conversations with board leadership. They have shared some of the feedback from the recent board self-reflection that you had earlier this month. So, I would recommend at this point in time, and this is certainly a conversation, so we can take it or leave it or modify it, that we develop a policy. We have, Bosse's is currently working on a policy. We have some friends in some other districts who currently have a policy. And I would recommend utilizing the policy committee. So, the recommendation would come forward to the policy committee. Policy committee would then follow the processes, any other policy, and bring that to the Board of Education. So, some thoughts to consider, having a conversation with Dr. Green. We were considering having an advertisement for application for any student who would be interested in being on the Board of Education as a student representative. We would look to have two students, potentially, a junior who's going to become a senior and a sophomore who's going to become a junior. We are also considering, after hearing feedback from other districts, of the requirement of being attending one board meeting a month because of the extracurricular activities they participate in, because of the jobs that they hold, all of those things. And we really want to create a situation where that individual is active and can provide input from a student's perspective. Also, we would look to have them potentially participate when you have your board report. They're a board member, they would be able to share their board report. And they, once they apply, we were looking to utilize structure already in place of student council to help make that selection on who that candidate may be. So the candidates are not limited to student council, but student council, because it's the candidate governing body within the high school, would make that decision and recommendation to Dr. Green, would make the recommendation to me, and then I would make the recommendation to you. So, I just wanted to float that out there to you. Like I said, I think the policy needs to come through the policy committee, but I wanted to take this moment to have any dialogue or if there are questions or concerns or thoughts that we may not have considered that you would like to pursue in that process.
I would say, I went to the Monroe County School Board Legislative Committee last week?
Yeah.
Last week. And there was some information about, in the update and report about students on school board in Monroe County and how they can be selected, was a little different than what I had initially understood. I was going to give Michelle, because I brought the paperwork with me because I thought the information from Legislative Committee I thought was very good and would be good for everybody at this table to have. But Nancy has graciously said she'll just share the link with Michelle so that it can be sent to us an email. But I think that will also inform how the policy gets made following, you know, the guidelines.
We'll utilize that as a resource at the policy meeting. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody got anything else they want to ask or discuss?
All right, so, once we have that policy approved, then we will put the logistics in place of the high school administration and we'll be all set for the July 1 deadline. So, thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Pleeny.
So last year, you might remember that we worked on having an additional method for parents or guardians to report their child's attendance, meaning arriving late, maybe early, or full day absence. So, please know families can still continue to call the attendance office, they can still email the attendance office, but we have now been up and running with great success using the Infinite Campus Parent App where you can go in and record your child's attendance as well. So, there are directions that are available on our website, super easy to follow. If you're a parent of multiple children who attend different buildings, but you're all going to be gone for a day or you've all been hit with the flu, you can do just one request and just click your student's name. So it's really super simple if you have a lot of kids spread across buildings. Maybe I know some experience. So just want to let you know that is a nice, convenient way for our families to input absences. And again, not a required way, but an option that's out there. So, hopefully people will continue to take advantage of that. This Friday is Superintendent's Conference Day for the district, so no students will be here, but our staff will be here, working on a day of professional development, really focused on our intentional value of lifelong learning. We have differentiated sessions based on the roles individuals hold in the district, so a lot of different things that are happening. Some of the highlights might include, or do include, they might be highlights, they might not, depending on who you are. Some of those highlights are our first cohort receiving letters training, will engage in their third of four days. That will be over here at, in the boardroom for our kindergarten and first grade teachers and that's really working on those foundational reading skills and some training for them that is in alignment with our shifts in reading instruction. Other elementary classroom teachers, reading teachers, and special ed teachers who are not in that cohort will be attending a keynote address by Jan Birkins, who is the co-author of Shifting the Balance. We're going to focus on the second book this year, this fall, excuse me. They're titled K2 and 3.5, but it's really a continuum, like a part one and a part two because you need to understand the part one to do the part two. So, this is the focus on part two and will be followed up with some professional learning opportunities for our 3 through 6 staff, just like we did with the March Conference Day as well. In the afternoon, our 7 through 12 teachers and TAs will be attending breakout sessions. They had a choice of nine different sessions regarding grading practices and philosophies. We have program coordinators, administrators, ID coordinators, who are facilitating those sessions, so that should be some great opportunity for conversation and learning together. We have some AI and specifically magic school training that will be happening throughout the day and then a variety of content-specific PD, some for our K12 special areas teachers, our mental health staff, math interventionists, with some outside presenters coming in to work with them. So, a wide variety of things happening throughout the course of the day. We may have a surprise guest coming in virtually to give a little bit of a motivational speech midday, but we're not releasing that until Friday, so we can fill you in on who that is afterwards. So, that's the perks of the day. When we meet again for a board meeting, I'll be able to share with you some of the feedback results that we always solicit from the staff, so we can always continually improve and provide relevant and timely learning experiences for our staff. And happy to answer any questions you might have.
That sounds a lot more exciting than mine Friday.
And there's a tailgate, just to no judgment.
There is, there's a breakfast, coffee, and donuts kind of tailgate happening in the parking lot from 7:30 to 8. So if you wanted to swing by, feel free.
I was literally thinking of asking my principal permission, I can't get a ride. After listening to all of them.
You can just let me know all signs of the sessions.
You have to jump to a standing table.
Anything else for Ms. Pleeny? All right, Mr. Dale.
Just want to talk a little about some personal goal for this year for myself and also about one of the goals for our office that we'll be working on. First goal is around communication and visibility. As you know, I try to get to many events and many of the schools, but one of the particular focuses I have this year is on recruiting and retaining. And so, one of the things that I have, and I should be done by Friday, is that by the end of the day Friday, I will have seen all of our new teachers in their classrooms and/or their offices by the end of Friday. You know, I think it's been rewarding, I've enjoyed, I've been invited in to see them teach lessons, read books to their classroom, and so even stop in their offices. But one of the individuals stopped me this week and said, "I want to let you know what a difference Hilton has made for me. I'm in the right place, this is just such a great district. I think you have to be in other districts to know how great Hilton is." So, again, it really, it really spoke to me as, you know, someone who does a lot of the recruiting, to just hear that voice. And so, I'll continue to do that throughout the year and just pay attention to their mentors and making sure they talked a little bit about the support that they get from their mentors. And also, as you remember, a lot of times now that we have teachers that come in with experience and don't have a required mentor, we offer collegial support. And so, one person said, "I just didn't know how it was done at Hilton." So to have someone as a collegial support for the first 10 to 12 weeks has just made my transition from another district to Hilton that much better. So, again, I appreciate the instruction office for that as well. And again, I am certainly glad that they are cadets. The second thing that I wanted to mention to you is, one of the goals that our human resources have that Brittany and I are sharing and our office collectively, is we're looking at our systems. And so, one of the systems that we started to look at last year was our evaluation of school-related professionals. Quite honestly, these were cumbersome evaluations that required an inordinate amount of back-and-forth communication. I don't think it was always beneficial to employees, that was the feedback that we were getting. I don't think it was beneficial for our supervisors who were, you know, providing those. For example, we had mechanics who were required to call home as part of our rubrics. So, I don't remember a lot of mechanics calling home, okay? And so, we wanted to have evaluations that were reflective of our cadet intentional values and we've aligned it to that. And also, the skills we're looking out of those individuals as quality skills that we're expecting in things like leadership, timeliness. And so, what we don't want is surprises around, you know, if you're concerned about someone's absences, you should have a conversation with them. So, we have worked with union leadership and again, union leadership from the SRP group was just great. We sent them an idea and this is a form-based, so this form is so much simpler. The employer, the employer will conduct the evaluation of the employee. They'll be able to sit with that individual and send that to them electronically. The employee can make comments on their evaluation and then again, they can sign electronically. The supervisor will get a signature, Brittany will get a prompt. She will acknowledge that everything is completed accurately, especially in this first year, which is new. And then it automatically drops into our electronic personnel file. Again, there were times when principals were having up to 60 emails back and forth and back and forth for a single evaluation. So, that's just not beneficial to, so. As we're looking at those systems, that's one system that will, has definitely changed for this year. The union leadership is very appreciative. I think our administrators, after being trained, are now super appreciative of that type of work. But again, it's overall, that's a system that we've certainly taken on this year and I'm thrilled to tell you that it's already in place for this year. So, just want to make sure that you're aware of that.
Any questions for Mr. Dale? All right, Mr. Geis.
Yes, we had our health inspections last week at four out of our five schools. And while we typically have really good health inspections historically, this year was particularly impressive because we had four of them and they were all perfect. They had no findings. So, really a shout-out to our head cook managers. We had Suzanne Antinet at Village Elementary, Kathy Batil here at Quest, Michelle Otman at the high school, and Linda Goodwin over at Merton Williams. Different inspector for Northwood, that's going to be coming up, but I'm sure Jean and her team will do equally as well over at Northwood. Update on our capital project, so the $37.2 million project, we are in the queue to be approved. As you know, it's a very lengthy process. City Bosse's ran an RFP process and now the third-party review for somebody that had been on the board for a while. They had that, they've made some improvements to it, they've brought that back. We were able to get into the queue, we've been assigned an outside architect and engineering firm now to review our project. We're hoping that that's going to speed our process up, allow us to get out to bid sooner and start moving forward with that work. So, our capital project team's really excited about moving forward with that. And then lastly, just an update on our financial reports to New York State. So we have all of those submitted, kudos to Jim. He and I have been working tirelessly to get those in. As you know, they're typically due at the start of September. Really no districts ever get them in that early, they kind of wait until about this time to get them in. So we've submitted, we've already heard back, our Form FT has come back clean, our Form FB has come back clean, our Form F6, and our summer school program has all come back clean. We had a couple findings where there's going to be some back and forth with our Form A. I've responded to two out of the three of those, so that should be hopefully cleaned very shortly. They have not picked up the bulk of it, the lion's share is all of our financial information on the SD3 portion of that. That'll be probably the last one that comes in with some back and forth on that. And then there's, we're, any moment now, I'm assuming we're going to get approval for our CPSE in the report file with that. So, we're in a really good spot, all of that's in, definitely in before the October 15th deadline to get into that November database, which will be used for the governor's budget. So, we're in really good shape. That's all I have for you tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Geis? Okay, next up, we have no public comments tonight, so we'll move on to approval of the minutes from the September 24th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 24th meeting?
Sound off.
Christine, second, Nancy, any discussion of the minutes from the last meeting? All in favor? Seven, no. All right, moving on to board reports. So I guess I want to start by just reiterating some of the things that Casey mentioned about board appreciation. board appreciation. You know, I get questioned a lot of time, why do I put myself through this, especially with all the craziness that we've had to deal with? And I think, a big part of it is the people that you're with, right? So I just want to tell everybody here at the table how much I appreciate everybody here. I love that we can be not so formal sometimes, and we can joke and kid around, and we all get along. I think we do a good job of modeling for the community appropriate discourse. You know, we have people from all over the different spectrums of things, right? All over, everywhere, right? We're all different people, seven different individuals, and I think in today's day and age, we do a good job of talking respectfully with each other and modeling appropriate discourse. So it's a lot more fun with all of you guys, so it's a different group of people who may think differently, so I appreciate all of you. Board development met tonight. Sounds like I mentioned before, we're trying to get back to that model where board development will meet, mirror what audit meets. Tonight, it was myself, Kaylee, and Casey. Therese will be joining us in the near future. She wasn't able to get here tonight. So we debriefed a little bit about our work session last week and our self-evaluation, and then we created some bullet points and action points, the things that we're working on. I still need to formalize the language around the goals we discussed. The goal, first goal being around Robert's Rules of Order. Thank you, Nancy, for agreeing to put together some online PD for all of us. And then our other goal was around board meeting protocols and procedures, and wrapped in all of that was that we were going to spend some time reviewing the handbook. So we talked a little bit tonight about what that process is going to look like. Kaylee's going to work on a schedule for that, but we probably won't roll that out till after we complete Casey's evaluation, because we have enough going on right now with that. And then we spent some time roughly talking about February 4, which is on everybody's calendar. So a couple of the major bullet points that, you know, we were initially discussing and wrapped into that evening was a little bit of a refresher on roles and responsibilities, governance, and your relationship with the superintendents. Casey's going to share with me a presentation on that stuff. Some more, and then more talk around Robert's Rules, proper board meeting protocols, debriefing on where we are with the handbook revisions and things like that. So those are all of our initial conversations along with that. So just a reminder on the Casey's evaluation timeline, we are meeting on Monday, we're meeting on Monday, the 28th. So I mean everything completed by October 25th. And then I'll turn that over and that will give you the weekend to review that, so that we can meet on the 28th. More specifics on time, when we get closer. That's all I have?
Anything to report for me? I'm going to attend Info Exchange tomorrow and the conference in New York City, and looking forward to seeing our student group. And just to kind of piggyback what Mark said about our board development handbook work, because I love a good table and schedule, going to break up when we're meeting, everyone's going to have like collaborative rights to the document or comments, suggestions before we meet. Everyone, not, even if you're not on the Board Development Committee, you'll have a chance to read a certain section and make your comments, and then we'll kind of work through it as the committee. So, that's it for me.
So I was here on the first with the rest of the board, doing our reflection on our board self-evaluation. The second of October, I was at the Legislative Committee that I referenced earlier. I do plan to go on Thursday to the Monroe County School Board Association School Law Conference, which is always interesting to see what has come through New York State Department of Education, new legal cases have been settled and so on. The Audit Committee met tonight, which Nancy and I were both at. We mostly focused on the Claims Auditor Report. We learned that we have Amazon Business Prime now, so that was interesting. We also heard from the outside auditor on the final audit for '23-'24. All of our accounts seem to be in great standing, and we are in a really good spot financially because of all the hard work of the business office and everybody else who contributes to that. So that's it.
I have my report.
I am working on the kind of a cambo of the Robert's Rules of Order. I did hear that people need interaction and not just reading stuff, so I'm going to try to pull some samples of local boards who run a great meeting and they recorded it, and you can really see them in action. Legislative Committee was discussing about what potential position papers for the year. We already have 13, so some of them will be kind of integrated, and there is a subcommittee that is working on writing up some more position papers. There was fiscal training this past Saturday. Thank you to ASBO for sending lots of financial experts from different districts. It was really good to hear from their perspective and teaching new board members their fiscal responsibilities. Information Exchange tomorrow is the Cornell Cooperative Extension, is going to talk about ag in the classroom, farm-to-table, a number of their programs, and I've heard rumor that there's some interactive bits to it. So Kaylee, sorry, you're on Zoom, but the people who are...
I wish I would have asked to spread out.
I know. The Law Conference on Thursday, we have a lot of people going. So there's three main sections. Pit Halls of Social Media, and that's concerning as a board member, as a student, as a teacher. Boards' Role in Special Education, and then there's a conversation with Daniel Morton Bailey, who is the counsel to the commissioner, and that will be with Sarah Visengard from Bond Schonach Thinking. They will be covering a lot of the cases, but it's also insight for our HR and anybody doing student discipline on how those cases that get brought up to the commissioner are kind of decided and what they're talking about. It's a great opportunity. And then additionally, there's an opportunity for school attorneys and HR and folks to actually meet for lunch afterwards, so they're going to kind of network. And again, Morton Bailey will be there, so that's great. And then District Ops coming up is on the RASH2 updates, which there's stuff, it's not looking good, so it'll be interesting. That is all I have. Thank you.
No report.
Okay, moving on to business consent. So we have an addendum to the Personnel Report as well as an addendum to the consent portion of the meeting. So the addendum to the Personnel as well as the addendum to the rest of the consent. So there's two addendums. All right, this goes all the way up through K with the addendums. Do I have a motion to approve the consent with the two addendums? Christine, Stephanie, and Natalie. Any discussion on any of that stuff?
I just have questions on the school tax rules. I know we're starting, that's kind of tis the season for, you know, people who are appealing their assessments. Are we seeing an increased trend with that this year, or we just don't know at this point?
We are seeing an uptick in the quantity, but we're not seeing major changes from the hearing officer.
Okay. Thank you.
Any else? All in favor? Seven oh. All right, that's going to bring us to new business discussion. So we have the first reading of some policies. So I need a motion to approve the reading of these policies. Kaylee, you have a second? Nancy? Any discussion on the policies? All in favor? Seven oh. And then we will table those, a motion to table those until the next time it comes up. Christine, the second? Nancy? Any discussion there? All in favor? Seven oh. All right, that lends us to the upcoming calendar. Just a reminder that we're not going to meet again until November 12th. There's already a couple of us that can't be here, so we're already down to five, so hopefully everybody stays healthy and we can get at least four new care. So if something were to come up, just please let me know, so I can talk to avoid any issues. All right, good motion to adjourn. Christine, the second? Kaylee? Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Have a good evening.